Five thirty-three. And we want to get started. I'm gonna turn it over to Councilman Nelson as my finance person.
All right, we're starting with the solicitor today, so that's all. There's nothing to turn it over to. We'll send it right back to Mr. Betza.
I have an email to me.
So the solicitor's budget is really not significantly changed except in two areas. There's a couple of increases in costs just because of print. Our copier contract went up a couple dollars and I think we were short a little bit on some paper supplies, but there's really no change there. There's two real changes. One is the pay for the deputy solicitor. The deputy solicitor, I had, if you recall, when Kathy Doyle was here, when she left, we reduced the pay of the deputy solicitor by about $10,000. And my plan, and I've proposed that the last three years, was that each year we would come up $3,000 to try to bring it back to where it was. This would be the third year of that, and so I have the deputy solicitor's pay going up by $3,000 outside of any additional percentage increases.
Sorry to interrupt, but that's page twenty-four?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The hand of the...
Of the budget.
Okay.
The one with the pictures on the front.
So the one you gave us yesterday?
Yep.
Okay. I'm sorry with all that.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four?
Thank you. So, again, that's one of them, is that the deputy solicitor went up. The other change is that a little over a year ago, we had two positions. We had a paralegal and a legal secretary. Due to retirements and kind of a unique skill set with a higher, I thought we could try to see if we could combine those positions. That's actually worked very well. When we did that, we did increase the pay of the new, whatever title you want to call it, but we did increase the pay. I've proposed another $3,000 increase, really because I wasn't certain it was going to work and I didn't know if we'd have to split it back out. But I think for the time being, while you have the individual you have, Ms. Waite, it would be definitely in our best interest to pay her competitively. And so that is a one-time. I'm not looking to do that number of years, but that would be a one-time increase, I think, to make that pay really reflective of doing both positions. That's it.
You added casual labor back in?
Casual labor is Mr. Vaseco. That has not changed. We have not. We've been pretty fortunate, I think, over the eight years that I've been here. We had a history, a long history, of referring a lot of things out of the solicitor's office, which I took issue with. We have not referred anything out this year. I don't anticipate, really, the need to refer it out. With the staff we have, we should be able to, and we need to be focused on doing that work in-house, not sending it out.
Oh, I'm sorry. You just moved the line. Last year, that was referred to as an assistant solicitor.
Oh.
And this year, you moved it to casual labor?
Well, I can't take credit for moving anything, but I think that is what it is. Yeah, that... We have a part-time solicitor who does not get paid benefits or health insurance, and that's what's reflected there. I do not, personally, I don't like referring work out unless it's something that we're not capable of handling. And that being said, I just thought of something where we did. We had a SOR issue that was referred outside because there was a need for somebody who had EPA experience, and so there was a need to do that. But that's not a good habit to be sending stuff out. We should handle that internally.
Is he committed to another year?
Who?
The casual labor?
That I don't know. I've had discussions with everyone. And just so we're clear, I'm not in the picture next year. I'm out, so the question is the staff. I believe that the staff would be beneficial to stay. I think Ms. Devlin has indicated to me that, or she has indicated to me, that she is open to that and would support that. I have given my suggestions to each of them that I think it's a good idea and it's a benefit to the city to stay, and I believe that they are willing to do that and desire to do that. I cannot speak as much for Mr. Vaseco. I just don't know, and I've expressed that also, Ms. Devlin. I don't think that's a guarantee. I don't think, I wouldn't gamble on that. And so that is a hole that would need to be filled if he makes that choice, but I'd never say never until, you know, he may change his mind. But his plan right now, I think, would be to retire.
Would you agree with State?
What, Jason? Jason, yeah, my understanding is Jason would be interested in staying.
As long as he's the one that's getting the salary.
Yeah, he's, yeah, yeah, no, I think if, you raise a good point. I mean, there can be changes, and I think if there are changes to the people, well, they may go down, they may go up. It should be reflective, really, of their experience. So what I'm proposing reflects the bodies that are in those positions. If those people were to change, then you would need to assess their level of experience and pay them accordingly. But, yeah, that pay proposal that I have is connected to Mr. Check, and that pay proposal that I have is connected to Ms. Waite. If those faces change, I would not be inclined to support those.
Any other questions?
Yeah, you have a really easy budget. You've cut the, you've cut it over the last three years. This is the fourth year, and it's only gone up a thousand-something from last year, so I mean, this is a really easy one.
Yeah, I'm bordering on cocky, but I think we're about half what we were in 2018.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Clerks.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Lori, you're next.
Thank you, Ed.
Sorry you're not going to be here, Ed, also.
Yeah, sorry.
Thanks, Ed.
Okay.
Okay, what page?
Page sixteen?
Fifteen and sixteen.
Councilmember Nelson found a discrepancy in the salaries of City Council that we have 2,000 for the council president and a $14,000 light item, line item, but we really only need 12 there. So I propose, we jump that into my budget. Really, Council's budget isn't changing.
So which one is that? One of the 12s?
The fourteen.
Should actually be a 12.
Should be a 12, because we counted the two.
So the 14 one needs to be corrected?
To 12.
To 12, and then the 2,000 needs to be corrected to 14 for president?
So that would just stay as the 2,000, so whoever was president, then that would just get tacked on, versus like going down the tier?
Okay, we've got that.
The 2,000 is at the top. And that's all done by ordinance?
Yeah.
And then, in the Clerk's budget, we fell short in a couple departments this year, so Finance was great and they helped us do some transfers. And we do spend the bulk of our money, I think, at the end of the year with advertising and just office supplies. And so we requested more money in office supplies from 3,000 this year to 5,000. That's one of the places that we had to change, put money in. And then operating supplies went down, and I think that was not a great place to be, but maybe we have 2,000 extra dollars to put over there. In overtime, which is at the top, we'd like to increase that. We were short there this year. And in the advertising, we're increasing from 7,500 to 10,000 only because we have no idea what the Home Rule Charter Committee will require of us for advertising, so we just bumped that up because we have absolutely no idea. And in other services, the codified this year, we codified, I want to say, 22 ordinances and last year, or 26, I'm sorry, and last year we only did 17. So we were short in that account, too, so we transferred money into that, and we have an estimate for next year's budget already. That's going to increase in January, and then this year, at the end of the year, we're going to go up to, I think, 56 more.
Where am I mathing wrong? So if we, because with the increases that we just asked, I noticed that the pension contribution anticipated to go down by 1,000, but it's only like a 2,000 increase when we're looking, but that, what we just discussed was definitely more than 2,000.
The MMO dropped this year, so the MMO is split amongst all of the employees that qualify for pension. We took the pension out of the council budget because the council doesn't qualify for it, and in past years, it was just evenly split up by number of employees in each department, so we changed that. But the MMO dropped this year.
So that makes, because that was down about...
Overall, you're going to see that in a lot of departments.
1,100, but we just, when Lori was going down through some of the increases, like from 7,500 to 10,000, bumping up from 3,000 to 5,000 with office supplies, wouldn't that the budget be more than just a 2,000 increase? With just, because just those alone were like the 5,000 that we needed an increase? Like the total overall budget?
Wow, wow.
So I think, if I'm reading this right, the total expenditures for 2025...
Yeah, it wasn't anything special.
...budget would be 372, 921, and anticipating 386, 639 for 2026.
And your operating expenses went from 32,000 to 42,000.
It's the salaries, yeah, got you. I'm tracking. Thank you.
Yeah, so...
Thank you.
Any questions?
And remind me, we approved the change on the transfer limits, right?
Yes.
Does that make it easier for you on your numbers, like where you're like, oh, I think we might be off by 1,000 here or there? Can we just call it a wash and say, hey, you can transfer 10,000 anywhere else?
Well, it surely helped with doing the agenda, made them smaller, but in the line items, it was just hard to tell because so many things came in under budget and other things came in over budget, so we just tried to adjust and guess.
Yeah, okay.
But knowing that we can transfer does make it easier in the future.
Because this is a lot of nickel and diming. You only have one item in your operating expenses over 10,000.
Right.
You could zero out any of those lines and make it work, except for other services and charges, which sounds like your most ambiguous line item.
Right. So...
Any other questions?
I remember last year, we discussed about possibly making sure that we had a digital access point for the Times newspaper. Have we discussed that any further beyond? Because I know when I had a meeting yesterday with Jackie, they were mentioning that they need access to the newspaper as well, so I didn't know if we were considering getting access to the newspaper for council members or for at least one person to have access in case we needed to read an article or two.
I want to say, I thought someone in the office had a personal one.
Okay. Because, I mean, I go to the free portal through the library, so that's not that big of a deal, but sometimes when you, I'm not paying. Do you know what I make? 6,000 a year on top of my other job. But anyways, I want to make sure that we have access to some of the digital articles. I know sometimes it takes a day or two for it to populate on the free access point, so I just wanted to make sure that...
Jeanne's working on that, actually.
Okay. I just knew that other departments had mentioned it in the past. I know we brought it up in conversation last year when we were in budget, and I don't know what happened, but...
Yeah, Finance and Purchasing are working on a lot of things, and that's one of the things Jeanne's got on her plate right now.
Sounds like a deal.
Because we shouldn't have each department contracting separately, so, yeah.
And other services and charges are like conferences and workshops?
No, that's actually the codified and subscriptions, printing, dues and memberships. We really didn't do any new memberships, but that's where we took out some of the uniform printing things out of that budget. I think that's where it came from. And their costs have increased for the codified, and we did amend many more ordinances this year than in the past.
City code?
So where's conferences and workshops?
For your side?
Education and training.
Education and training.
Oh, okay, yeah, I completely missed that.
Last year, we asked for, to increase it because we were looking into getting more training for the staff. We anticipated this year going to the PML, and then it didn't come out of our budget, so that was like a gift, but we do have, we're looking into it. We just didn't find anything...
That you could use.
Yeah, that seemed to be good for us.
And City Council has 8,000 in education and training.
Did you get any update on the newly-elect training? I know you were bringing up in conversation yesterday that, okay, just making sure, nothing changed.
I don't think that the PML is going to have training.
Okay. I just wanted to know.
Like they used to, so that would have come right out of that budget.
There are a few other organizations who are, who've already announced, like their Cidics, so I can get...
Oh, great.
So that way, councilors can look at it.
Well, Lori, everything looks good. I don't worry too much about the Clerk's office because you always run things by the president, and the president normally knows what's going and coming. So I know Tyler and Mel have been doing a good job this year, making sure expenses are under, so good job.
Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Lori.
Thank you.
Great, the mayor and Renee couldn't make it tonight, so I'll just run through the mayor's office quickly. It is on page 17. Can everybody hear me? I don't want to touch my mic, I'm afraid it'll start feedback. Yeah, and it's kind of high.
Okay, I'll be.
Okay. All right. If it starts feeding back, it's your fault. Okay, all right. So the mayor's budget really hasn't changed much. It's, well, down in the labor area, we have the increase from 95 to 120 for the next mayor's salary. So that was, that was an ordinance last year, so. And pretty much everything's the same as it was. We just carried the same budget forward, except for the wages, and they've got their increases in there.
Now, question, with us getting new mayor and staff coming in, the salaries that are depicted, are they going to be expected?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, but it's kind of like Ed said. This is put together using the people that are actually in those positions now.
Currently, okay.
So there might be some changes to these positions and salaries. That'll be up to the new administration. So we calculated all the benefits based on the current salaries, along with the mayor's increase. And the only other thing that sticks out here is that the communication bill was higher than expected this year, and that's because we had some, some people moved out of the mayor's office and their phone budget stayed there, so we're probably going to fix that before the end of the year. So it's only a couple hundred dollars. And...
On the one that we have, it looks under budget.
Well, I mean, that's through, through October, so it's probably going to go over budget if we don't reclassify some of those expenses where they belong. So that's all I have for the mayor's office. Melissa, anything? Any questions?
Is the treasurer here?
He was back there.
Oh, he's, he's back here.
Are we going to go over the communications?
No, treasurer.
Will we go over communications? Because I mean, one of the...
Oh, communications.
Go over the communications.
It was mayor's, communications, treasurer's, and then development, finances, code enforcement. Oh, yeah, well, I wrote it down earlier from my...
Well...
Well, he can listen, maybe I...
Kyle will be really fast, because he doesn't have a lot of changes either, right?
No, no changes.
No changes.
You wouldn't get their memo up to steam bath either, huh?
It's a little warm.
This year was freezing, and this year it's hot.
What page are you on?
Oh, communications is on 18. You ready? You got, you don't have any changes at all?
I don't have any changes at all. Nope, we took the same, the same amounts that were carried over from last year.
Okay, except for the wages.
Except for the wages, right.
Yeah.
Where does the contract with CAM fall under, like that?
That's in general government.
Yeah. Is that administered by this, by you all? Do you oversee that contract? There's some question about that. It's a little fuzzy, honestly, yeah. We're trying to clear some of those things up, because as you know, there've been... I think there's a lot of like, I don't want to say handshake deals, but I think there was a lot of things that were like understood, but maybe not captured fully yet. Yeah, and, you know, there've been changes at CAM. You know, there's different rules and regulations now from the state and the federal government that CAM is having to adapt to.
Bottom line, I'm sorry, bottom line is, they work for us, right? That's what the contract says. So when we call them, we want a meeting Tuesday night, they should be here Tuesday night, not tell us that they can't be here this night. We've had meetings changed because CAM couldn't turn the cameras on. I find that...
But we don't, like, so that, I think that's part of where the contract, that's where the fuzzy is.
Live going to it.
Because if it's not clear in their contract, and they've already booked somewhere else, then they can't come because they don't have enough staff.
Yeah, because we, as a council, we know that we can have study sessions on Tuesdays and Thursday nights, so we kind of like mark that off, but if we don't schedule with them, they are not going to anticipate working with us. Yeah.
That's where we need to, wherever the changeover is in staffing, having to... Yeah. Yeah, and if you, and if you run into those situations, please let me know, because I can bring them up to Craig.
Under salaries, how many employees does that entail? Five?
That here full-time, yeah. Yeah, five.
Okay.
This is another pretty straightforward one. We try not to make it complicated.
Any questions?
Yeah, it's kind of hard to try to hash out on when it's mostly just salaries, you know? Can't really do much with that.
Yeah, the, I think the only thing I would note is under... Well, you went down, like you cut your budget. Yeah, education and training, I believe it was under that line item last year that we transferred out to, for the cafe interns, for celebratory, but, you know, we've, we've spent hardly any money at all under office supplies or any of the other funds. We had one large expense, having to fix the camera earlier this year that our digital specialist uses, but, but other than that, we've stayed well within the budget. Where do the cuts, is that where the cuts are going to be then, in the operating supplies? Because they're not listed like due date right now, is that where they're going to? Because if you're, you're just dropping, I'm just trying to make sure I'm following.
Group insurance.
Is it the group insurance? Okay.
Just group insurance.
Yeah.
Go in peace.
Anything else? Okay.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the treasurer.
Kaz, where are you?
There, there they are.
Kaz and the treasurer, basically.
No.
Where's the treasurer? What's going on?
Treasurer is... What page are you on?
Twenty-five.
It's page 25.
That's the council book, that's not the budget.
Now, my first question, because I have one, is did we hire the individual that we were supposed to hire from last year that you all begged us to give you funding for?
Oh, yes, we did.
Okay, all right, all right. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that was one of the things we were going to say here today. You know, we was going to say, thank you very much for that, because that was a position, that is a position that is definitely, definitely needed, and since the new employee has come on, she has been really, really, really been a good benefit for us. As you all may know, 2025 has been a, it's been a very challenging year for the treasurer's office, due to, in the beginning of the year, we had to, we had the county tax bills and the city tax bills and the stormwater bills, they were at the post office, and they asked us, the county asked us to bring them back, so they said...
Do you think we fix that issue on Tuesday? Never mind.
So, so I really just wanted to say thank you to Teresa, your office, they helped out tremendously, because we manually had to take out 37,000 bills and print new bills and put bills in, and Lisa, your office, even, not only your office, even... and Lisa, your office, even, not only your office, even Melissa stepped in, and they had crates and crates of tax bills that, you know, they were taking them out, and we manually had to put them back in the right, with the right city bill, the right parcels and everything, and good thing that we put them all in the right ones, and Kathy got all her Kathy's, and she didn't get any of anyone else's, you know, so just wanna say thank you very much for dealing with us and going through all that with us throughout the year. As for the budget, our budget is basically the same as last year, the only real addition is postage, and that's because postage goes up every year. So we went from fifty-five thousand to sixty thousand, just because of the price of postage.
The, the issue that I see with the budget is where we were with the city controller, just that salary for the city treasurer, I think is, you're not, I think it's a problematic salary.
We, we fixed it already.
Is it already, I meant, when is it?
In two years, we need one more election.
Okay, one more, okay. I don't know, my, I didn't retain it, but that's, that's not okay. Good, I'm glad we were already proactive, never mind.
We're working on it.
Everybody else is coming up this year, you know, they stepped into the...
It doesn't kick into a new treasurer comes in.
Cas screwed it up, he had two more to go, right?
Should've had a couple, I should've done it four years ago.
Done with front of the puddles in there.
You have two more years left right now.
And I plan on coming back.
For the race?
Dead or alive?
I'm healthy. Jasmine's laughing.
I'm laughing, I mean, hey, when, when you got the time, you got the time, right?
Are we gonna...
Keeps me young, Jasmine.
On the dog licenses, I'll keep bringing that one up, the dog licenses. I do think we should punt that back to the county.
Well, that's your decision, okay?
I think that's, it's a redundancy, and in the state law, I believe it falls on the county to do it, so we're doing a service, and I don't think it's one that we should...
Yeah, we only collect what you, we only, with all due respect, we only collect what you give us.
Yeah.
It is labor intensive, you know? Or what it brings in, it's, it takes away, it doesn't seem like it would, but when they come in, it basically ties up a couple employees for a short time, right? We got, we got switched from dog to, it just, you know, now with stormwater on there, yeah, if you wanna get rid of it, it wouldn't bother my department one bit. It would, it would, we could focus more on the other.
You rid of stormwater too?
No, I, I, I got, I got feelings about that, and I think if the public understood that when you collect the stormwater, you're putting that over everybody. If you were to put that on the taxpayers, that levy, only the taxpayers would pay.
Right.
And if you come to my office and look at what, I'll, I'll take somebody out of random, take Mercy or Strang, they don't give us a pilot, take a look at what they pay on the stormwater, you know? In the future, I think I could see us doing it with public safety, you know, things like that, because the only way around the state law, which says we can't tax, is to have a fee.
Right.
So, you know, that'd be the way to...
And the fee goes across the board to the non-proper?
Unless the state, the Commonwealth wakes up one day and decides to tackle the issue. Sorry. No, it's my wife, she's on the injured list.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
I mean, I understand the point of fees, I know property tax only, only hits the taxpayer, so I'm, I'm gonna always say the fee is the way to make everybody pay.
We're, we're getting a little, I noticed a little problem with the stormwater, and I, I think before the end of the year, I'd like to get together and maybe have a little press conference, explain to people that it's not a one-year thing. I, I seem to be seeing a trend where they paid the first year, sometimes not the second or third, you know, a few people, so it looks like there's some confusion, but, but I think in, in general, you know, that fee coming in is a lot better than turning around and levying it on just taxpayers.
Right. I understand.
'Cause we don't have an awful lot of pilots, which is something we should work on.
I agree.
What would you say the difference in the collection for the stormwater was? Like this year compared to the first year we did it?
Well, we collected around eighty percent the first year, and this year we're probably around seventy-eight percent.
Seventy-eight? Okay.
It's just that when you work with stuff, you see trends that kinda make you wonder, are they, are they thinking this is only a one-year thing, you know?
But it's a statewide thing to deal with stormwater, isn't it?
Yeah, but not everybody, not, I don't think Milford puts a tax on them, it's up to every township or municipality to levy it if they want to. I don't think everybody does, though, to my knowledge, right?
Not that I know of.
Yeah. But it's a lot, it's a lot better than going after taxpayers, you know?
We don't put a lien on their house until three years of not paying?
No, we actually lien them right away. Well, what we do right now is we send them a nuisance letter if they don't pay it with the first year, and we send them a nuisance letter which has an additional fee added on to it, and that has been getting people to pay. So we, we had roughly, probably, don't quote me on this, the first year was probably around seventy-four hundred parcels, and I think now we might be down to maybe like twenty-three, twenty-four hundred parcels of the first year, 'cause we've been sending out notices and letting them know that you still owe this, and that fee has gone up since. So that's how we've been trying to combat it, to get people to pay the twenty-four and twenty-five.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Jupiter, they're very niche questions, so I'll offline about them.
I'm happy the help that we gave you last year has been helpful, so I know this year has been a trying year, and hopefully with the new election results, we'll have a good year next year.
I think we will, you know? Like, I, I, yeah, go ahead, sir. Thank you very much for that extra employee, that helped quite a bit.
Do we ever get any money from the county?
Well, we did bill them.
I knew you guys worked hard to get this thing out.
We billed them, but they have not paid us.
And, you know, we're, how do you say, hopeful? We might be talking with our attorney, Eddie, see if we can, as, you know, with the change administration over there, I don't know. It, you know, we did bill them and we worked with finance, making sure we had the numbers all covered with the overtime.
But if we provided them a service, they should owe us the money.
We're at the window.
I got, I was a little worried this year, 'cause I heard comments from one of their council people that the same issue might be serviced again, and I said, oh, no, you know? So we're gonna stay on top of that issue. We don't, we don't need a repeat of that.
Thanks, guys, I don't have any other questions.
Say goodnight.
So your office is fine?
Okay. And feel free to come down if you need, you know, guys have any questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Have a good night.
Okay, next up is development finance.
Everybody has been saving this water for the next person, so...
Nobody's touched it. So if you're warm, take your coat off.
What page are we on this one?
Okay.
Development finance is further forward in the book, nineteen?
Thank you, nineteen.
So, putting strength forward as budgets go, and if you remember, a couple of years ago, we broke that out separately because we thought it would be a good idea to see how much it costs to operate these development programs versus what it actually earns. And I kinda liked having that transparency, because it showed what it costs to be able to offer that service versus the program income, and I like that it's still a profitable venture.
Is it broken out in this?
I don't think that's in here, but, we're around seven fifty a year in program income versus what it costs to, to run that.
What is it cost?
In terms of, in terms of, well, in the budget that we're, yeah, that we're looking at. Just in terms of operating expenses, you can see I spent nothing, I think four ninety-five is what's listed in here, and that was actually reimbursed, that was a conference I went to where I was a speaker, so I think we got that back. So I continue to run it very conservatively and try to grow the funds as much as possible, and of course, my position, as it has been for a while, is a hundred percent reimbursed. The development funds pay for that, so it's just a pass-through. I don't know, is that in miscellaneous reimbursement?
Yeah.
So on the top side of your roll-up, there's a line item miscellaneous reimbursement, which would include that dollar amount.
What, what happened, so that's a three hundred thousand dollar profit off of that, does that roll back into the revolving fund, or is that going to operate?
So we do, we do a, a few things with, so yes, we generate around seven fifty, give or take.
Right.
Pays my salary, the rest of it gets put back into the loan funds, but we also, for example, we support the fly Erie fund.
Yeah.
And being able to bring those breeze airways.
Micro grants, yeah.
The flagship fund. We've done some other initiatives with the program income that we've earned, because it's basically, at that point, you know, you, you look at what you're earning, and it's like, what, what's a need in the community, where should we direct that? And I really like the fly Erie fund model, because we were able to step up, be one of the larger contributors to that, and do it in a way that, that did not touch our budget. And the reason I felt it was appropriate to pull it from there is because it's directly economic development related, being able to, to help stabilize operations there, and we needed to be a partner with that, and find a, a funding mechanism that does it in a way that's sustainable long-term, that we could do this if we're able to attract another flight. And so, ongoing, I think this could be, you could build on that model. But yeah, otherwise, it just isn't much there. I put a little bit in for office supplies and, and, but like I said, this past year, I actually spent nothing, got reimbursed for that four ninety-five, so... Might be the most boring budget in your book, I don't know.
Questions? Do you wanna bring code enforcement up now?
Ask Steve to come up.
Sure, Steve.
There's nowhere to nickel and dime when it's all been nickelled and dimed.
There's, there's not much there.
That's what I'm saying, like, this is not my first budget back, back in, I'm aware most of it's the salaries.
Yeah, well, and same with code enforcement, if you look, the budget's actually lower than two years ago, lower than last year, lower than two years ago.
What page are we on here?
Page twenty.
So we've really tried to control expenses. Obviously, a lot of that, you know, is gonna be there, it's just the way it is, but the crew has really done a good job of trying to, to run a tight ship. We don't spend unless we have to, and I would say that the, the main change versus last year is if you recall, we built in, for one year only, the position of assistant manager of code, because we were in that transition period. We funded that out of the, some of the program income off the, of the loan funds, so that it didn't hit our budget. So I took that out this year. So the assistant manager of code position's been eliminated, we're just back to having a manager of code, which is Steve, and I did put some funding into, what line item? Educ, uh, professional services, so that our current manager of code could continue to consult if we need it, but it's a much lower cost than having that position in the budget. So our current manager's gonna transition into a consulting role if and when we need that consulting, but I would think over the past year, you know, Steve's really been able to, to, to get up and running, and there's a few things that I'm sure we're gonna need help with, but I don't know if you wanna speak to that, Steve, where we are now versus...
Yeah, I think that Andy is a good resource to have on, on hand, he's got twenty-some years of knowledge with the department, so there will be times that we will need to contact him in the future.
Professional services.
What's your staff complementing, how many people you have on staff?
We have twenty people.
We have, we have one vacancy right now.
Right.
And if you recall, the other change we made is last year, we, we took one of the zones, one of those positions, and dedicated it solely to rental inspection.
Right.
Uh, we did have a person here, but they, they were only here for, I think, five or six months, and they took another position, so that's vacant again.
We are in the process of interviewing for that position, though.
And I still like the idea of having that position focused strictly on rental.
How did that go? Was it, did you see a lot of the tenant issues that were coming repeatedly somewhat?
So there were two...
Getting addressed?
There were two outcomes to that. First of all, I think it helped with our sweeps.
Okay.
Because as we talked about, a lot of the junk and debris, vast majority of that are rental properties. And so we also had somebody out there bird-dogging the rentals, and I think it really helped on that end. The rental clerks also saw a jump in registration, because they all started to notice that we were looking. And so I really think that we should continue with that, you know, it's unfortunate that person didn't stay on for long, but while he was here, I think it made a difference, and, you know, you've got almost half of your resident's rent, we need to have somebody who is dedicated to strictly inspecting those rental units, keeping on the registration piece of this, and so right now, that's the plan, it is in the budget, it's just vacant right now, we're in the process of interviewing, and hopefully that's filled soon.
I think it should be more public, if anybody should be in a public safety, it should be you guys. You're going into all areas of town, and you're going in with a complaint, so you're going in with people who aren't happy in the first place, and if they've been having a little through what you're getting in the morning, it can get ugly. That's, a couple of guys came up and talked about maybe being licensed to carry for their own protection.
Right.
Well, we put them through safety training. They did, they did go through...
People with proper training, if then, if you're asking trouble walking to, you know, I know these areas pretty well.
Yeah, we did put them through training.
I'm sure it makes you aware, I'm sure it's right what you guys are doing.
Thank you.
I don't think most people are aware of what they walk into. We've had people physically threatened, threatened to get nasty. We've had an inspector, their name put out on social media, where is this person? Does anybody know this person? It, it's a tough, tough job, and, you know, they walk into scenarios that typically are, are challenging, and so it's a tough job, they do the best they can, and, you know, we've only got a small number of, of actual inspectors covering a large area, so...
I'm not picking that budget for that for such a reason, you guys are, for instance, scores up this week.
So, but there, you know, there's, there's things that, that, that I think we can build on, I think we've come a pretty good way here this year, but, you know, there's, there's some other things that, that we're looking at, and I think Steve's gonna be able to take that to the next level and build on what we were able to do this year.
I'm not, you know, trying to be the good guy, but I've been around a long time, when there's problems that have to be done, I have to go to different places to get help. I only have to go one place, over force, when those guys jump on it. Those guys jump on it, and it's covered 24 hours. I get a call back and they say, "Ed, it's taken care of." You know, those stuff thrown garbage over the fence or whatever. And that's so important.
Well, and a lot of that...
Listen to and help.
And a lot of that, you know, some of that credit goes back to you because you... You went along with our crazy idea of the abatement fee. That really shocked people.
Yeah.
When they come and they see that hanging on their door... How many did we hang? A couple hundred?
Probably close to three hundred now we've hung.
Yeah, and we only had to clean up...
A handful.
Seven, seven or eight. I mean, when they see that number, they're like, "We're gonna... We're gonna jump on this."
So we did this study session with you, I think it was in April. You know, we're six months later now. How have those numbers been holding up on the revenue side? You know, like, how have tickets issued? Are we still seeing... You know, I don't need to see the bar charts and stuff that you gave us before. But, you know, how are you guys viewing those numbers right now?
There's fewer tickets being issued for junk and debris. Uh, we're still issuing for grass and vehicles, but there is fewer for junk and debris.
I do know that with us getting the new code enforcement officer hired for the rental inspections, I would like to discuss possibly implementing a fee for when we... Our guys with public work have to do cleanouts or, like, large, massive garbage pickups because they're just left... I mean, I see it all over the city, so I know that it's a nuisance. And if we can implement a fee for that cleanup, I think...
That's the big one.
We did that march.
Yeah.
For when the landlord just put it out?
Yeah, that's what that is.
Yeah, that's the abatement fee. It goes on their water, sewer, garbage bill.
Okay, I just didn't know where.
So that's how it's routed to the owner.
We talked about it so much for two years. It's like, oh, yeah, we did do that.
Did we do it?
But that's where it shows up, is on their water bill.
So have you seen that going down, or...
Well, we only had a half dozen or so, right? So it's on their water bill, and then we'll have to see how quickly they pay that off. But once word got out there, I mean, it really got people to react. And if you remember, we had to do it that way legally. You can't call it a fine. And you don't want to do it... You do it in one way, you have to take it through a different legal channel, right? Whereas you do it this way, and we were able to find a case where other cities had done it this way, and it goes straight to their water bill. It... People react differently.
Are we seeing a trend with, is it more... Of like, the landlords who maybe are buying up tons of property and aren't here? Is it this... Are we seeing, like, trends in where it's... Where the problems are?
A lot of it would be vacant landlords.
Okay.
A lot of it is.
So they're not...
They're not visiting the properties, and they're supposed to be doing that.
No. Uh, and then the other question is, how about with our inspections of some of the businesses versus, like... Just like individuals and people? Like, some of the... I've got some business, like, you've noticed and brought up a couple of times with some who are leaving. A lot of just dishwashers and washers and refrigerators and...
Yeah, they're told they're not supposed to do that. We do send people over when we do get complaints about certain businesses that have washers and they're encroaching the sidewalks. And we do send our people up there. And they do move them back. They do start getting rid of them. Yeah, it's... There's a couple of them, they're tough. There really is. I'm sure you see the couple that are doing that.
Is there an ordinance that's prohibiting or something that we need to address on this side that would be helpful in being able to hold some of them accountable like we are, like, in this capacity?
So I... So let me touch on this because I think it's sort of related. But what I plan on doing outside of this, because I don't want to cloud it with the current budget. But we have been talking about a few things under quality-of-life ticketing. And it goes to work that's being done illegally, to people who are not licensed to do that work. And as it stands right now, typically, the quality-of-life ticket for that is a one-hundred-dollar fee. That's not scaring anybody. They don't care. They're gonna roll the dice, and they're gonna continue to do the illegal work. So there's two pieces to this. Number one, it was a conversation with the solicitor's office. Do we need to actually... Can our crew go out there, walk into a job site, and without a licensed journeyman or master, be able to write a quality-of-life ticket? Whereas before, there was... There was the thought where you had to try to catch, wait for somebody to come back. So I think the way that they approach these inspections, we're able to do differently. Secondly, and again, I don't want to get too far into this, but there's some initial language that we're working on with the solicitor's office to change quality-of-life ticketing from a hundred dollars to a thousand. And if you're caught doing illegal work that... And you're not licensed, or you have apprentices on a job site, and there's no journeyman or master to be found, or you have somebody who's taking their license and allowing others to do work with that license, and they're not part of that job, and we know this is going on, I think we need to put a little more teeth in that.
Is this geared towards businesses? Is this gonna be utilized against an individual who may be... That's doing work on their house?
No, not on their house.
This is meant to be... This is meant to be for the contractors who should know better.
We have certain contractors who are selling their license to get permits for individuals who are barely apprentices. This is what we're going after, as far as that thousand-dollar fine. We're trying to stop them from doing that.
It's really clear, you need to have a journeyman or a master on site. And when you have apprentices working under someone else's license and everybody knows what's going on...
It seems like a real easy fix. Can we just throw that ordinance on the next agenda?
Well, we want to... So it's like the abatement fee. We want to make sure the language passes legal muster. And so they're working on that now. And I think next month, we'll have something for you. But I didn't want to build this into the budget because we need to do it first. And a couple of other things, we're looking at rooming house inspection fees. We need to make sure that our fee structure is helping cover the cost. There's some instances where our guys are going out so many times for one project, over and over again. And it's not covering the cost.
We're looking at electrical permitting and plumbing permitting and mechanical. We're kind of low on that end as far as other municipalities. That's what Chris was talking about. We're going to be coming to you, probably not gonna do much with residential permits, but commercial permits. Like Chris was saying, we had... My plumbing inspector went over to Edison School forty times on a three-thousand-dollar permit. So we're... We lost on that. So we gotta bring it somewhere where we're doing better than that.
Yeah, just, I mean, something that accurately reflects the cost, but it's always something cautious. We lack investment in this city, so we don't want to discourage investment. So like, you know, for residents, you know, the one-off type thing of somebody going to a residential property, putting in a new box or something, you know, like, I...
Yeah, and typically, that's one visit, right? But when you have an inspector going somewhere forty times, and, you know, there can be... You can sharpen that up a little bit. Like, let's make sure that we don't call them out until you have things done the way they need to be done. And certainly, and you've heard me say this many times, I don't ever try to stand in the way of investment. I don't like taxes and fees, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But there comes a point when you have to... You have to discourage bad operators, right? And that's all we're trying to do. This isn't meant to actually raise any revenue. This is meant to, like, the abatement fee. That was never about revenue. That was about changing people's behavior.
Right.
And that's what this is... Would be, too.
Yeah, I've had people tell me that it's a mindset that people just don't follow the rules here because nothing is gonna happen. So if you don't have any type of financial reprimand, you're not going to follow the rules, so...
Right, that's true.
Yeah.
And the vast majority of people are good. They follow the rules. We have a handful, and it's just the same... It was the same with junk and debris, right? It takes a small number to really mess it up.
For everyone, yeah.
Regarding the contractors and selling, you know, giving their license away. When you catch them, why don't we blast them in the paper, blast them on Facebook? Let everybody know.
The difficult thing is catching them because the problem is, they've got the job done ninety-nine percent of the time before they come and get their permit. We know a couple of them that are doing it, but we can't actually prove they're doing it. If they would do... If they'd get the permit and then do the work, it'd be a lot simpler. And a lot of them are doing it in the evening, too.
After hours.
Right.
But the process is, they're supposed to get the permit first, right?
Yes. The only reason they would be allowed to not get the permit first is if it was an emergency situation. Then they have seventy-two hours to get a permit only if it's an emergency. And that's the state law.
So it'll always be a challenge, but I think if you raise deterrence, it'll help.
I think the homeowners or the business owners have a responsibility in this, too. They should ask, "Did you get the permit before you even start?" "Oh, I'll get it later." No, well, you won't start the project. They have a responsibility as well.
I see it...
And that's the message we need to put out there.
I see it being where, in this... With my work with our West Bay Front, is they would take, especially with disabled or elderly, especially when it was a widower who was at home by themselves, how many times they would come in and they would take the money. They wouldn't be licensed, they had promised, or they were showing something else. And so she just took it as... Often, she just took it as...
By giving them a deal, it's actually not a deal.
It's a lot of vulnerability.
There is. And so I do think we have a... We have an obligation as...
And then sometimes you'll get the homeowner that'll be like, "Oh, I'll just tell them I did the work." And then the contractor, whoever's doing the work, is protected because now they have the umbrella that the homeowner did the job. The homeowner is, you know, doing this.
Unfortunately, homeowners would still be accountable to code, even if they did it themselves.
Well, you'd be surprised with how many people I chat with when they're doing something updated. And I'm like, "Did you get a permit?" And they're like, "What are you... What are you talking about, a permit?" I'm like, "Well, technically, you're supposed to get a permit for..."
Yeah, but a lot of times, they'll have... Their contractor will tell them that they have the permit. So they're just taking it at face value. So again, this isn't meant to be against homeowners. It's not meant to be the vast... Against the vast majority that follow the rules. It's meant to try to deter the small number of people who game the system. And it's a safety issue. And, you know, we'll have some thorough language for you to review. We want to make sure we do it correctly, so...
Increase the fine to an extra thousand if it's a senior citizen.
What?
If it's a senior citizen, you want to charge them an extra thousand?
No, if they do it to a senior citizen.
Oh, okay, okay. Fine them if they're taking advantage of a senior citizen. I'm like, what?
We gotta watch the word "fine," isn't that...
Maybe we can sign a police officer.
Abate them higher.
I appreciate your hard work, both of you. Well, it was nice and easy to follow. I feel like after a few times of doing budgets with a certain council, you know what we want to see and how we want it broken down. So we appreciate all the recommendations we made last year to make the budget easy to follow. And when most of it's the salaries, you really can't do much. I mean, you guys hardly order office supplies. You guys make it work among each department and outside of the salaries. There's no more squeezing, so we'll see what happens.
So with Andy, he's retiring. You have that consultation fee. But if you don't need him, then that becomes something that's still in there.
Right.
Right.
And how our money left over and the clerks and city council gets passed over to the next year, that's how that will probably go.
Yeah.
Like, our professional service.
You've known me long enough. I really don't like to spend money. You'll have to.
Well, thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that's it for presentations. Do we need any other discussion? That's the only thing on the agenda, is open discussion. Do we have anything further to discuss? All right.
I'm good.
President, do you want to adjourn it?
Adjourn.